Well, good evening Iowa City and this is the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting for August 4th, 2020 and we're gonna start with roll call please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Sully?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
Welcome again, alright. The second item on our agenda is proclamation for the water and waterways workers of Iowa Week. Whereas the state of Iowa's surface and groundwater are treasured and limited natural resources. And whereas protecting and preserving those water resources requires the talent, expertise, and passion of individuals who have committed their professional careers in service to Iowa City's residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural community members. And whereas the water and wastewater divisions of the Iowa City Department of Public Works have dedicated themselves to apply environmental science to enhance drinking and recreational waters of Iowa City. And whereas their applied environmental science-based practices continue to be vital element in improving the quality of life and preserving and protecting public health in our community and promoting sustainability. And therefore I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City hereby proclaim the week of August 16th to August 22nd, 2020 as wastewater workers of Iowa Week in Iowa City and urge our community members to recognize the valuable role clean water plays in our daily lives. And here to accept today is our city engineer Jason Havill.
Good evening Mayor and Council. On behalf of the city's water and wastewater staff, I just want to thank you for this proclamation. These workers are dedicated, talented, and extremely proud of the work that they do every day to ensure clean water and sanitary facilities throughout the city. So just a couple of quick stats on the water side. The Iowa City Water Division has 32 water professionals with a combined 458 years of experience who make and deliver 2 billion gallons of high-quality drinking water every year. And that is served to 29,000 metered accounts annually. On the wastewater side, the City of Iowa City Wastewater Division has 25 wastewater professionals with a combined 345 years of experience who retreat and return to the environment over 3.2 billion gallons of water every year. They're responsible for maintaining 320 miles of superpipe and performing over 11,000 tests annually. So again, I just want to thank you for this proclamation and the recognition for our water and wastewater workers. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our consent items, items three through eight. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
Moved by Sally. Second Weiner.
Alright, and public discussion, this is a time for people in the public to address any item on the consent agenda. I do understand that we have one person that certainly wants to address item number 8B, Maya Sims. And if I can have you raise your hand? I do, yes, alright. Welcome Maya.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I am the advocacy intern for Community Transportation Committee. And we know that decisions regarding Iowa City's transit are going to be made shortly. When these decisions are made, I am asking you to please keep low-income, second-shift, and Sunday workers at the top of your priority. The current system fails to meet the needs of these workers and we believe that they deserve the same service that weekday nine-to-five workers get. When these changes are implemented, we request that you make all bus passes universal on Coralville and Iowa City systems and that you extend weekday service to midnight and expand service to Sundays. CTC has demonstrated an immediate need for these services in our 2015 study in which we found that 40% of respondents reported turning down a job due to poor transportation. 35% of respondents reported that they had lost a job for the same reason. And 30% of respondents reported that they gave up looking for a job due to limited transit. Our study also revealed that the most difficult days to get to work or a job interview were Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And that the most difficult times to get to work were early morning and evening. It's clear that the current system is not meeting the needs of the community and negatively impacts people with low incomes. Why is it that only the 31-day pass, the most expensive pass, works on both Coralville and Iowa City buses, but none of the other passes do? All bus passes should be honored on both systems. Expanding service to midnight and Sundays would benefit the many workers whose employers remain open at night and on Sundays such as hotels, food service, and retail stores. Now, we understand that funding is a constraint, however, we also recognize and support the Iowa Freedom Riders demands to defund the police department and reallocate those funds in a way that benefits BIPOC persons. Law enforcement receives more than 20 times as much funding as transportation. We are also calling on the city to seek state and federal grants for employment-focused transit initiatives and developing public-private partnerships that enhance the affordability of transit for workers. To say that the money does not exist is no longer acceptable. Our community deserves these services and it is the council's responsibility to find the funds to provide them. These requests are supported by the Center for Worker Justice, Democratic Socialists of America Iowa City, Iowa Freedom Riders, Coralville Community Food Pantry, Successful Living, and the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. Please commit to improving the lives of low-income, second-shift, and Sunday workers by making all bus passes universal and extending service to midnight and Sundays. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you Maya. Would anyone else like to address any item that is on the consent agenda? Lori, followed by Audrey. Hello Lori. Lori, can you, can you hear us? We can't hear you right now. We're gonna go to Audrey and then we'll come back to Lori.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alright. Hello, thank you for having us talk on this. I am here, I'm Audrey Keith. I'm the co-chair of the Iowa City Democratic Socialists for America. And I'm also here to speak on item number eight, which Maya just talked about. And so I'm here to say that the DSA fully supports the letter that the Community Transportation Committee has sent forward to the city with their recommendations for how we can improve transit in Iowa City. And I mostly just wanted to share some of my like personal experiences with the public transit system. Ironically, I'm actually not a person who's been able to use the bus. But in 2014, I was a job coach for Goodwill and I had many clients who, some of them used the bus, some of them could not. And like a funny thing about working there is a lot of my job was actually to just give people rides to work at the end of their shift when they would get off around 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM. And so as a job coach, the idea is that I work with people and then I'm supposed to help them work towards independence so that they no longer need a job coach. However, the lack of public transit meant that there were certain people that would always need me to be there and stay with them until the end of their shift so that they could get a ride home because there's no buses available and they could not afford a cab, nor was a cab like something that they were like... That was like not an accessible form of transportation for them. And so I saw these issues with public transit and how they affected my clients and their ability to work independently, which then also like affects their ability to like efficiently use their Medicaid funding because I would have to stay late with them instead of like me coming to their earlier shifts and things like that. And just experiences with my coworkers, having a hard time getting to and from work, figuring out, you know, where they're gonna live relative to their job or where can they work relative to where they live. All depends on the buses for a lot of people. So I just want to say that again, I'm gonna ditto everything Maya said. She really brought forth all the important points. And so as part of the DSA, I'm in support of the Community Transportation Committee's letter. And I also want to thank the Iowa Freedom Riders for bringing to light the like huge funding difference between the police department and transit. I think knowing that makes it all the more urgent as we can see that there is now, there is funding available that could be reallocated towards public transit. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see Lori back on yet, but if she does come back on, we will honor her comments later. Anyone else like to address any item on the consent calendar from the public? Ehun, please.
Oh yes, uh, my name is Taehyun and I'm, I'm international student from South Korea. So since I'm a student here, I like especially during semester, I need to study at the library like until like late night, even if it's on Sunday. And sometimes I found myself to look at the app and the service is already done. So it's like the service keep going on Sunday and even at the night. I think it usually give me a benefit and makes me more motivated to study.
Um, I'm Taehyun Kim's roommate, Ian Fechek. I'm also a student at the university. And for me, late-night transit on Sunday is really, really nice because walking home late at night by yourself is not always the most comfortable thing in the world. And to have a safe space that you know is going to be safe and drop you off a block from your house means that I can stay out and work in my laboratory later, or stay out and study later, or go socialize with my friends, obviously not right now, without having to worry about my own safety as I go home.
Thanks to you both for joining in. Would anyone else like to address council on any item that's on the consent agenda? Alright, Renim.
Hi, my name is Renim and I am an organizer with IFR. I would just like to make council aware that IFR will shortly be sending information regarding Phase One of our police demands and that we are urging council and city manager Jeff Bruin to have the same level of discussion and progress that we have been having regarding the TRC with our police demands. I understand that council has been consistently updating the Black Lives Matter page that they have on their pay, on the city page as well as updating the document regarding what progress has been made on the 17 resolutions. But after we send, you know, after we present council with these Phase One demands, we are hoping that council and city manager Jeff Bruin act more, you know, more interact, show the same efficiency and show the same productivity in terms of making progress in terms of these demands as we have been doing with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. I'm gonna count that as somewhat related to 8B, Black Lives Matter movement. And if anyone, so the, we're gonna continue to get public input. And this is time to talk about anything that is related to the consent agenda. David?
Hi Mayor, thank you. First, just want to back up what Maya said, just want to say thank you for everything they brought forward to the city. I think transportation issues are an important part of these systems that, that council has talked about, you know, using the term systemic racism, things like access to resources and work are very important parts of that. So I also want to back up what Renim's been saying. I've been working with IFR in some capacity and talking with Renim quite a bit. And, and just want to say that we appreciate you all bringing this up again and making sure that we can sort of refocus our efforts on the next steps of this. So some of the things Counsel Weiner talked about during the work session just before this, I think were some really important points using the language that we like to hear, like being sort of imagining what we, what we're thinking about community safety and accountability to look like going forward. And so we really appreciate everyone's thoughts about bringing in community input, specifically focusing on BIPOC voices in doing so. So just want to back up what Mayor Protem said about that. And then finally, just want to say that those ideas that you all are talking about, you know, how can we find these ideas? How can we outsource and get some models for what some of this looks like, some of this community safety and accountability? This is work that IFR has been doing. And so I think we're more than happy to, to meet with you in the coming week or more than happy to publish some of these things that we've been reading. There's huge bodies of literature about what this looks like, about how to imagine community safety and accountability that exists outside of calling the police for everything. So just want to let you know that that stuff is there. I mean, community input is gonna be really important. IFR fully supports that and needs that as part of this process. But there are also, you know, this work has already been done in communities all over the country and I think we don't have to reinvent the wheel. But maybe some of these sessions that y'all are talking about can also be sort of educational sessions. And we're happy to provide you with some of the resources that we've been using and collecting to understand all these different models for community wellness and accountability. Thank you.
Would anyone, thank you David. Would anyone else like to address council on items that are on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, council discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number nine is a time for community comments. This is a time where anyone from the public that would like to address any item that is not on council agenda, now is the time to do so. And and this, we ask for people, I should have asked this before, so forgive me for not... We ask people to keep their comments to five minutes or less. And I'm gonna start with Sarah Barron.
Hello council, good evening. It's good to see you all. I want to talk to you just briefly about housing. I'm Sarah Barron. I'm the Director of the Affordable Housing Coalition. I paid close attention to your discussion at the work session. Thank you so much for reevaluating the constraints on the shelter house administered funding to make it easier for families to access. As you are well aware, addressing housing and keeping people safely housed through the pandemic involves a lot of complex issues because housing is never a one-size-fits-all issue. And so I want to just highlight a couple of things that I want you to continue to consider as you craft the city's response. One is that we are gonna have many households that were receiving the $600 a week stimulus who were not eligible for the State of Iowa program. And you have considered that with the extra programs you've put forward. But even though they can apply for the State of Iowa funding now, they may already be behind. And so they will be able to apply for August and forward, but they may still need assistance catching up on the previous months. And those are the kinds of circumstances that are gonna require a blending of the responses that are available. I also want to encourage you to continue to consider the recommendation that was contained in our Housing Needs and Solutions Report that I sent to you all earlier last month about paying the rent or mortgage upfront so that people don't have to fear eviction and foreclosure before they can get assistance. This is something that the State of Iowa program is offering. People can apply for up to four months from the time which they apply. And the safety and security that that provides to families in this time where we have an increasing acute concern about eviction and the impact that would have on households would, would be another level of support that I very much think the City of Iowa City can, can do an even stronger job of supporting. None of you will want to be behind on your rent or mortgage before being able to, to access assistance for that. And we can certainly be a little more creative about how to provide upfront assistance to households so they don't have to fall behind in order to access our assistance. And also so that they don't have to return multiple times for help, but they know that they have a three- or four-month window in which they can get back on their feet. So please continue to consider providing some sort of monthly rental assistance rather than only an emergency response to people who are already behind. We need that stability so desperately right now. Finally, I just want to, to give a word of support to our nonprofit partners who are taking the responsibility to keep people safely housed very, very seriously right now. And we had some City of Iowa City staff and others from HCDC, thanks to Janice's recommendation, who did participate in a series of ongoing meetings to develop a really comprehensive response that promotes those values of equity and safety and stability and also a rapid response for families right now. The last thing that we need is for someone who is struggling to have to go knock on five or six different doors to get the help they need. So we're really pulling together a system that leverages the strength of existing partnerships and also creates new ones so that people can go to one place, talk about the need that they're facing, and be met with the response that's appropriate for their situation. And we wouldn't be able to do that without the City of Iowa City's support. So thank you and also let's keep moving forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you Sarah. Would anyone else like to address council? If so, you can raise your hand by, there's a little raise hand button. And I will call you. Seeing no one? Alright.
No, I'm here.
Oh, I am sorry Florence.
I'm sorry you heard me saying that with annoyance. Can you see me?
Oh, we can hear you, please.
Okay, fine. Okay, thank you very much. I'm very glad that you have these online forums. We appreciate that very much. I'm Florence Bruce. I live at 1427 Davenport Street. I'm a member of the Iowa City Dear Friends. We know that you are preparing for a bow hunt this year. We are very sorry about that. We'd like to know more of what's in the code. And we have also researched what the codes are in other districts in Cedar Rapids, elsewhere in Iowa, and around the country to see what some of the items which are included in other codes may be. Now, our first concern is to plead with you that this year at least, we not have out-of-county bow hunters which might be bringing in COVID-19 and other infections. Remember that students are gonna come back, we think, August 24th in huge numbers. And to add to all the uncertainty of that, to have out-of-town bow hunters might increase the COVID rate. Then each bow hunter should take out insurance. It seems to me that this should be similar to accident insurance that you have to take out when you drive a car. Obviously, many different kinds of accidents can happen. We hope not to people, but certainly to animals and others. That's somebody who's out at night and so forth. So insurance beforehand, the size of the property on which the hunt occurs should be three acres or more. It's not appropriate to have a bow hunter in the city on a tiny little plot. The person who hunts must get permission from the owner of the property in writing. There could be a form for this, but the point is it should be on record who it is. Because during a bow hunt, it's extremely inappropriate to ask an owner to rush out and say, "What's your name? These guys have big weapons and the house owner might not." So permission must be gotten in person, excuse me, in writing beforehand. And also for the neighboring owner because as you know, the deer will run across property lines. It seems to me that the registration of the bow is necessary, but also the individual arrows. As you know, often a deer is found bleeding to death and then there's an arrow in it. And it should be clear from which bow that arrow came so that one can see who is responsible for this death. And no trespassing on adjoining land. Honestly, a homeowner could have four different neighbors, so even if the one neighbor has said it's okay, there will be other properties nearby. Another important concern for us is the minimum distance of the tree stand. Hunters obviously bow hunt from, from raised platforms. This should be a certain number of yards from the roads, from paths, and of course from buildings. So we hope that you will take these matters into account so that we can have a code that protects the citizens of Iowa City and and minimizes some of the unfortunate and in some cases cruel incidents that will accompany such a bow hunt. Thank you very much for listening. And I'm glad that we'll be able to talk about these matters at future council meetings also.
Thank you Florence. And I am sorry council, I realized that was number 14.
Yes.
Yep, yep. Anyone else like to address council? We do have a caller on the line and so if you would like to address council, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Alright, hearing no one else, we are moving on to item number 10. Today is conditional use permit 4200 Block of Yvette Street Southwest. This is a letter of recommendation to the Johnson County Board of Adjustment for a conditional use permit to allow a commercial communications tower at the 4200 Block of Yvette Street Southwest in unincorporated Johnson County. Can I get a motion to approve?
Moved by Mims.
Second by Sally.
Alright, and I see Danielle, welcome.
Thank you Mayor, Council. This is Danielle Sisman, NDS. This is an application from Steve Ward of Ward Development representing AT&amp;T New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for a conditional use permit from the Johnson County Board of Adjustment to allow for a commercial communications tower in unincorporated Johnson County on Yvette Street just south of Highway 1 and west of Sharon Center Road shown here in the white outline. This is the surrounding zoning. The property is currently zoned county agricultural. It's adjacent to some commercial zoning, county zoning, both C commercial and CH commercial highway, highway commercial, as well as surrounded by agricultural. And the county's zoning code permits commercial communication towers as conditional uses in agricultural zoning districts. A conditional use permit allows for types of uses not specifically permitted in a base zone as long as certain conditions are met related to whatever the proposed use is. And the subject property is located in this city's fringe area, but outside the city's growth area. So the inside growth area is that purple area at the top and the outside, the growth area is located as the olive color where the subject property is actually located. Fringe area agreements are a component of the city's comprehensive plan. This is a conditional use permit, not specifically addressed by the fringe area and forwarded to us because of county zoning ordinance that includes a city review of such types of applications. So in general, the city does prefer to locate commercial land uses within the city limits. But this is not typical rezoning. It's a rezoning action just for one specific type of use. It gives us a more precise understanding through the conditional use permit process of the purpose, the scale, the intensity of any proposed future land uses. I mean, in this case, the underlying zoning would not be changing, so the land would remain zoned agricultural. Also, in this instance, we know that the proposed use is for a specific thing, a cell tower, as we would call it. It's a 190-foot tall monocle-style communications tower intended primarily to improve cellular signal service in the southwestern Johnson County area. It will also offer It will also offer a location for future co-location by other providers and further strengthen the first net network as well. Prior to applying for the conditional use permit, the applicant did study other alternative locations where they could perhaps co-locate their facility. They found none that were available or suitable for their needs for the purposes of expanding their coverage area. The scale and nature of the proposed end use will not require water and sewer. It's fitting for an agricultural zone. For the more the county's review process does provide a formal process for ensuring that the development of the site will meet their pertinent codes, including setbacks, landscaping, security fencing, lighting, maintenance of the tower, and eventual decommissioning of the tower. The parcel of land on which this tower will be located is highlighted in blue here. So dimension is adjacent to some commercial development in the county. It is outside the city's growth boundary. And the existing neighborhood character is large lot farmland and scattered rural residences. And the subject use would be located at least seven hundred feet off of Highway one and a hundred eighty seven feet from the eastern property line. In particular, this property does include a stream, as you can see, kind of in that spider web on the northern part of the property, and you can barely make out that there's an electrical transmission line that bisects the property from north to southeast. This conditional zoning permit process, as I mentioned, those are included here related to standards that would have to be met. And the city did do an analysis of this. The communications tower is allowed basically by the county in any zoning district in the county, but for one environmental resource preservation zone, which this is not. The fringe area agreement directs uses outside of the city's growth boundary to be consistent with rural agricultural character of the area. The county's future land use plan indicates this area is appropriate for eventual redevelopment to intense commercial or low intensity industrial, while it's agricultural today. And communication towers can be found in both agricultural areas and near commercial uses as well. So the overall character of the subject area will not be greatly affected by the addition of this tower. As I mentioned, the process here is that the city provides input to the Johnson County board for them to make their determination. The county staff has indicated to us that they also intend to include several other conditions. The county staff would be making those suggestions to their board. That includes approval from the F A A for the tower height, ensuring that compliance with all those supplemental conditions are made. And also, the applicant did go through a separate county process to slightly alter the setback requirement that the county's ordinance requires, reducing the overall setback from one hundred and ten percent of the tower's height to roughly about ninety-six percent of the tower's height. And the applicant did provide a rationale for why that would continue to meet the safety requirements that the county is interested in maintaining. So based on that analysis of the proposed project, staff did recommend approval of the application. And at their July fifteenth meeting, by a vote of four to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission did as well. I conclude staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions.
I don't hear any questions. Thank you, Danielle. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. And I will call on you. If you're on the phone, press star nine. And the caller on the phone, we're asking all comments to be limited to five minutes. And please identify yourself with first and last name on the phone.
Good evening. This is Steve Ward with Ward Development. Staff did a very good job at presenting the case. I just wanted to be here and answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't hear any questions for you. Thanks for being here. Would anyone else from the public like to address this topic? Hearing none. Counsel discussion.
Well, I will be supportive of it. It's pretty well covered, I felt, in reading the staff, the summary of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Pretty comprehensive review at that stage, and I think it was well, well considered at that phase. And so I will be supporting it.
I will also support it. I agree with John. We got a lot of pertinent information on this. And one thing that struck out to me was that this tower could potentially be used for many other providers too, as well as just a single one, which that's a good thing.
Hearing no other comments. Roll call, please.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
He?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed a seven to zero. Item number eleven, amend Heinz Road urban renewal area. This is a resolution approving amendment number two to the Heinz Road urban renewal plan and projects for the urban renewal area. And this is, I'm going to open up the public hearing. And staff presentation for eleven. Well, the staff presentation, and they're going to cover items on our agenda for eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator. This and the next two items are resolutions adopting amendments to three of our industrial urban renewal areas. Those are the Heinz Road, the Scott Sticks, and the Sycamore and First Avenue areas. These amendments will allow the city to enter into agreements with businesses and industrial users to provide economic development assistance for properties or for projects that improve energy efficiency of businesses and industrial users located within them. The goal is to reduce carbon emissions required to power their operations and help us achieve a forty-five percent reduction in carbon emissions by twenty thirty. This is important because industrial users, and there aren't many of them out there, but they do account for about twenty-seven percent of Iowa City's carbon emissions. And commercial users account for another twenty percent. That was in the Accelerating Iowa City Climate Actions Report. Lots of work, as you know, has been done over the last decade on climate action. And last year in particular, the council increased the carbon emissions reductions targets, also declared the climate crisis, and requested a report to accelerate the city's identified climate actions. That report, I referred to earlier, the twenty twenty Accelerating Climate Actions Report, includes a Buildings and Incentives section, which includes this action item. Launch a TIF-funded climate action incentive program aimed at reducing industrial energy consumption. So to encourage energy, or excuse me, to encourage industry to make the sizable investment required to improve energy efficiency, companies will be able to apply for economic development assistance for eligible energy efficiency improvements. Upfront costs are significant, but companies that make those improvements will begin to see an immediate return in the reduction of energy costs. And over time, the cumulative reduction in carbon emissions required to operate the business will be better for us all. So how will the program work? Through tax, through the tax increment financing capacity in the remaining life of these three areas. As you know, tax increment is derived from the difference in value between the year we first certify a council-approved TIF project and the current value. The TIF increment is the taxes paid by the property owners in these industrial areas above the original or base value. And that can be used for matching grants or unqualified industrial energy efficiency improvements. Our local industries would apply for funds for their projects, which would be vetted by industry professionals, and then would enter into a development agreement with counsel upon finishing that part of the work. I want to show you the area if I can. And let's see here. Well, there are only two of them. Can you see, okay? Sideshow. Here we go. There we are. So as you can see, the red arrows are pointing to Scott Sticks and Heinz Road and Sycamore and First Avenue. They kind of marched down our industrial area in the southeast corner of town. And those areas we're choosing in particularly, in particular, because of the, I referred to it before, the life that is left in the TIF district. When we set up an economic development TIF district, there's a twenty-year lifespan on it. And in each of these, there are just a few years, if not, in one case, just one year left. And it is that tax increments from those areas that would be available for us to use on these energy efficiency projects. There's a little bit more of a close-up that shows the roads here. Those were basically all of my comments, and I'd entertain any questions if you had them. I'll leave the map up if that helps for a bit.
Hearing nothing from you. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And can I get a motion to approve?
So move, ma'am.
Second, Taylor.
Also discussion. Roll call, please.
So Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yeah.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Motion passed a seven to zero. Item twelve, amend Scott Sticks urban renewal area. Resolution approving amendment number two to the Scott Sticks urban renewal area, urban renewal plan to add projects to the urban renewal area. I'm going to open the public comment. And would anyone like to address this topic from the public? I'm going to close the public hearing. Hearing no one. And can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
I'm moved, Sally.
Second, Thomas.
Counsel discussion.
I just wanted to say that for all three of these, I think it's a really, it's really commendable and creative way to use the remaining years of the TIF in these three cases. And I really hope that some of these companies take advantage of it.
Agreed. Yes. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Item passed a seven to zero. Item number thirteen, amend Sycamore and First Avenue urban renewal area. This is a resolution approving amendment number thirty to the Sycamore and First Avenue urban renewal plan to add projects to the urban renewal area. I'm going to open the public comment. And is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Don't move, Thomas.
Second, Burgess.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, please. Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed a seven to zero. Item fourteen, deer management bow hunting. Ordinance amending Title Eight and Title Police Regulations, Chapter Seven, entitled Weapons to Allow Persons to Discharge an Arrow as Part of an Approved Deer Management Plan. This is first consideration. Can I get a motion?
So moved, ma'am.
Second, Thomas.
All right. And is there staff presentation on this one?
I can jump in. Eleanor, are you going to handle this one?
I can. It's pretty straightforward. The city code for it is the discharge of an arrow within city limits, excepted an inanimate object. Deer are not inanimate objects, and so this adds an exception for the discharge of an arrow in connection with the city's deer management plan.
All right. Any questions for Eleanor? Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And actually, this wasn't a public hearing, now that I think about it. I'm going to end the public comment, and then counsel discussion.
So, oh, go ahead, Susan.
I'm sorry. I will support this, but only because it was a matter of our negotiation with the Department of Natural Resources so that we could get the sharpshooting contract, which I felt was really important, given the deer numbers in the city. I'm not a proponent of a bow hunt within the city, but we have an obligation to follow up with the agreement that we made with the D N R, so I will honor that.
This is kind of back to Eleanor, just a quick question. So this that we're deciding on purely is discussion of adding the ability to bow hunt. But as far as like the specifics of that, that's a whole other discussion for us if we want to add some specific rules and regulations for that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and we're working on those now. So we've pulled as much information as we can from other cities in Iowa. We've been consulting with the D N R staff to try to determine what the appropriate rules and regulations will be for us here in Iowa City. You can see the correspondence with the D N R attached to your agenda item. We are looking at bow hunting only taking place on private property. So you may recall that we did do sharpshooting on, in public property as well. But as far as the bow hunt goes, that'll be limited to private property. And then, much like, I believe it was Ms. Booth spoke earlier, we'll have to put limitations on where. So you can't just hunt on any private property. We're going to have certain characteristics of that property, permissions from property owners, and all those sorts of things to present to you, probably at the third reading of the ordinance, which will take place on September first, if we stay true to schedule. And with the bow hunt, cannot start until October first. So we'll have basically a month to work those out, if you see anything at that September first meeting that you want to change.
Thanks. Thank you, Jeff, because I think I had a lot of concerns about this, about the bow hunting. But, and I think Ms. Booth brought up some that I hadn't even thought of. So I think that'll be a good idea, and if the staff looks at those concerns and we can see those, that'll be great.
What is the minimum amount of time that we can sort of honor our agreement with the D N R and still have a bow hunt?
I believe we, at minimum, committed to a thirty-day bow hunt. I'll have to double-check that real quick, but I believe it was stated in the D N R, the approved plan, that it would be a minimum of thirty days.
I think so, too.
Yeah, it needed to be meaningful. We needed to define meaningful.
So in other, I hope in the end that we will not approve it for more than thirty days.
That'll certainly be your discretion. Our intent going into it was to just mirror the state bow hunting season, which would be much longer than thirty days. But if your direction is only to conduct it for thirty days, then we will certainly follow that.
That would be my preference as well, if that's what will get us within, as long as that keeps us within compliance of our agreement.
I agree.
Yeah, this was, this one was a challenge for counselors, I know. For me especially, I wasn't in agreement with the bow hunt. But at the end of the day, we really didn't have any other option in order to get our numbers down with the deer. We needed to have that sharpshoot, which even that, we didn't want to do, but we needed to do it to get the numbers down, and we continue to see. And we continue to see deer in our community. And hopefully, we'll be able to do some meaningful bow hunting to even get the numbers down safely. So I will support this regardless, without much excitement, that's for sure.
Real quick, I will need to circle back with you at your next meeting on the 30-day period. I do see in our correspondence with the DNR back in May that we indicated it would coincide with the bow hunt season, and their approval letter referenced our letter as well. So we'll have to see what kind of room is there to create a 30-day window. But we can talk about that at your second reading.
Any other counsel discussions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes, I, motion passed a seven to zero. All right, we are on to item number 15, which is council appointments planned in the zoning commission. There's one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2023. All right, and we're going to have counsel discussion at this point.
Well, if I read the packet appropriately, we have a gender requirement here for one male. And I think as we discussed last time, the one male that we have here is another Realtor. That would give us three out of seven members on P&amp;Z that are Realtors, which I personally am not comfortable with. So I would like to defer this and request that all of us on council get the word out to people in the community, men in the community, that we're looking for an applicant for P&amp;Z that is not a Realtor. That would be my preference.
I was thinking on those same lines also, Susan. We certainly have a lot of folks out there that have urban and regional planning background that would be perfect for this commission. John can attest to that. So I would think too that we could, although it says then after September 24th, we can appoint without regard to gender. But of course, that would be five female, two males, but so be it if it has to be. But hopefully, any men out there that would be interested in this would be perfect. Nothing against Adam, but yeah, I think three Realtors would be too many.
I would agree with deferring for that reason.
You do.
All right, so looking like we have the majority wanted to defer, so could I get a motion to defer?
I put on motion to defer this to the next time.
Taylor, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed a seven to zero. Item number 16, announcement of vacancies new. This is the Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, plus a three-year term upon appointment through December 31st, 2023. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM September 8th, 2020. All right, moving on to item number 17. Announcements of vacancies previous. Airport zoning board of adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street. One vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side. One vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Wood Lawn. Vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. All right, item number 18. Ryan Longnecker, we're going to, let's see, are you still with us? There you are.
Yes. Hi, counsel. I don't have much to report tonight. I personally was in Iowa City on the first, starting to move things into my new townhouse. And so were about thousands of other students that I saw. And I was lucky to not have to wait in line to get into an apartment complex. But so students are getting ready, moving back into Iowa City. Classes, for the most part, are finalized as to whether they're online or in person. And students can find those in their MyUI. And that's essentially all that I have right now, and we're continuing to work on, you know, questions that students might have related to COVID. And so we're both excited and nervous for the start of the school year.
Well, welcome back to Iowa City. All right. Number 20, item number 20. Any update from our city manager, Jeff Roy?
Not tonight, ma'am.
All right. I see our assistant, city manager, Ashley Monroe.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. And then our city attorney, Eleanor?
Nothing.
And then our city clerk, Kelly?
Nothing for me.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to say that that was a motion by Taylor and seconded by Sally.
Sounds good.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.